2025 Mayor and Alderman Meeting, County of Mont Eagle. If you will rise, we'll ask Dan Sargent to lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. My Father, we thank you again for this day and your kindness to us, the many, many provisions you make for our lives each day and continuing to prosper and guide us in every avenue of life. And we just thank you for the city government and the opportunity to serve the public in this manner and just pray that you'd give us wisdom in the things that we're considering today and the things that we discuss and things that are brought to our attention and just ask your blessing and continue to be with our first responders, our police department and those that are looking after us 24/7. We just continue to ask your blessing on those that couldn't be with us today and as you guide us through our meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call, please.
All right. Here.
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 Here. You've received the minutes in your packet. I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minister approved. You ahead of the minutes? Approve them. To approve the, I'll accept a motion to approve the minutes of the June 30th public hearing for ordinance 08-25.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any corrections or additions to that meeting? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's approved. Okay. Citizens' comments. Any citizens wish to be heard at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is John Kristoff. I was a resident of Mont Eagle for many years and now live in Jasper. I lived in Mont Eagle for 39 years, now live in Jasper, Tennessee. I'm asking you to put yourself in my shoes. Imagine what I describe is happening to you or your loved ones. Ask yourself, what would I do if this happened to me? On May 4th, 2022, I observed a Jasper police vehicle on Armory Road parked at a house. I did not know anyone who lived on Armory Road. Mayor Turner had reported in the paper that the Jasper police fuel budget was overspent $40,000. I thought if the budget was overspent $40,000, why is Mayor Turner parking our police cars in Mont Eagle? I took a picture of the police car out of my truck window with no one present and drove on. I wanted to submit a letter to the editor with a picture asking about it. I emailed my letter that evening. The next day at 6:00 PM, four carloads of police came to my house and arrested me for coercion of a witness and felony stalking. Chief Rayline told me Police Chief Police Officer Dwayne Dykes made a false report about me. Chief Rayline said District Attorney David McGovern told him to write warrants on me and give them to Grunde County Sheriff Clint Strum to investigate. An investigation was never done. Instead, an arrest hit squad was sent to arrest me on false charges. I told four arresting officers I had to get my COVID mask and they could watch me as I reached in my garage door to get it in plain sight. I told them to not come in my house because my wife is in the shower. I do not want you to scare her. Both Marion County deputies entered my house without probable cause. They pushed past me, took eyes off me, started walking towards the shower where my wife had just gotten out in a robe. She was terrified. I believe Marion County deputies wanted me to fight or flight so in either case they could shoot and kill me. I allowed them to arrest me and haul me to Grunde County Jail. I asked to bond out. I was told if I did not give them $500, I'd be locked up in a cell. I refused to pay extortion. I was made to strip naked and shower in front of a viewing window where I believe I was filmed. I was locked in a solitary cell without my CPAP or medications. I told them I was a fully disabled senior citizen and not eating all day. I was given a bottle of water and no food. A towel was hung over my cell door so no one could tell if I stopped breathing without my CPAP. South Cumberland State Park Rangers Bill Knapp and Jason Reynolds testified at my arraignment that I hiked on Meadow Trail without any evidence, told Judge Anderson I could have done something wrong and George Sheen was afraid of me. I believe park rangers tried to hurt me because I reported them for dereliction of duty and neglect in the death of a nine-year-old girl who was killed by a dead tree that fell on the girl in Foster Falls State Park campground on her first ever camping trip. I reported that the park rangers neglected park policy requiring that they cut the dead tree that fell on a nine-year-old girl and killed her. My case was dismissed by a grand jury of my peers. My attorney, Robin Flores, told me District Attorney Julia Veal said they've gone too far this time. I question how many times has a district attorney allowed police and park rangers to violate a citizen's human rights and overlooked it? My records have been expunged back to perfect. Grunde County Herald printed an apology for publishing my arrest picture. It was not my best picture. Attorney Flores filed a malicious prosecution lawsuit against Officer Dwayne Dykes for $117,000. Before my case got to court, the Tennessee Supreme Court gutted the malicious prosecution statute, taking the legs out from under my case. Today in Tennessee, bad police and park rangers can come in your house, arrest you on false charges, put you in jail, violate your human rights, and you cannot sue them. It cost me $8,500 to deal with Grunde County Court and the unjustified harm done by Rangers Bill Knapp and Jason Reynolds. Police have qualified immunity. So now that malicious prosecution statute has been gutted, you cannot sue police. Citizens in Tennessee have no more protection from bad police and park rangers than citizens in China, Russia, Iran, or North Korea. If they did it to me, a 39-year veteran park manager, they can do it to you. What would you do if bad police or park rangers came in your home without probable cause and terrorized your wife and loved ones? The Marines have recently detained Americans in America. Government made errors that sent people to prison in El Salvador without due process. Governor Lee and the Tennessee Supreme Court have allowed this to happen to us in Tennessee. Neighbors say Governor Lee's government is capable of setting us up for the next crisis where he can arrest and abuse us at his will. It's happened to me. It can happen to you. How can you protect yourself from bad police and bad park rangers? In Tennessee, you cannot. I asked Senator Gardenhire to help me. He emailed me back, "I will not help you." Are these the end of days? Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other citizens wish to be heard? Thank you. Then we'll move on. What? Oh, Martha Anne?
I was grateful that the Mountain Market was held this past weekend. However, I think Mont Eagle needs to take charge of that. It was the strangest setup I've ever seen. It was not well done and I think we need to take it over so we can get it back to the way it used to be.
Any other citizen comments wish to be heard? Okay. Mayor's Communications. I have several items. First of all, there was the Mountain Market. We'll look at that, Martha Anne. It seemed to be well attended. The tent setup was a little different with some of the vendors being under the tents to prevent any rain disruption, but we can address that. Fresh Mess is still ongoing, so if you can support that Thursday afternoons, 3:00 to 5:00 or 3:00 to 6:00, whatever, that's still going. July 4th parade seemed to have been successful. There was a good crowd, from what I understand, and a good parade. So for those that participated and were there spectators, thank you for that. I'm working with the Senior Citizen Group out of Southeast Tennessee Development to discuss the armory and the use thereof. We have not gotten a final official word that the armory deal has been concluded with the three-star county grant program, but I'm still working with Southeast Tennessee Development to maintain some kind of services. I have a meeting with them this week. It seems that the CETHRA contract will expire or not be renewed at the end of July due to low participation. Sometimes we have as few as four seniors having lunch there. So we'll take a look at that entire program. I've asked Dean Lay to help. Unfortunately, he can't be here tonight, but we're working on a revamping of the senior citizen population that we have and the programs that they can participate in. The Mont Eagle Sunday School Assembly has had issue with bears. They're black bears. They're a protected species, but one of the recommendations that Tennessee Wildlife made them is to secure the garbage. So soon, I'll be meeting with Beautification to decide on garbage cans. I believe the Assembly will be undertaking a project to eliminate garbage cans unless they're secured in some kind of shelter. The bear population is coming out of hibernation. If they're hungry, they're going to be looking for food. So be aware of bears. They won't harm you if you don't harm them, they say. Don't challenge them. Don't feed them. Don't talk to them. Just let them be bears and move on. So if need be, and I will probably put on the website, Tennessee Wildlife's recommendations for that. If you go up to the Gadlinburg area, there's big posters right in the lobby of many of the hotels there on how to react to bear. So just passing that on. The other thing I have an issue with, and it's probably no one's fault because the people here, it looks like I'm preaching to the choir, but everyone wanted a website. We did Master Blasts. We did it on Facebook. We did it on Mont Eagle Bulletin Board and people still tell me I didn't know. Well, if you or anyone you know has not contacted City Hall to get information about the website or being on the Master Blast list, which is an email we send to citizens, or any means of communication, please do so. It's important that we communicate with the citizens. That's why we set up these procedures. And then I hear nobody uses it. So that's kind of disheartening when everyone said we need a Facebook page, we need a website. So that's my comment. I think you all get the message. Just please pass the word. There's no way for us to reach people if they don't reach us. So I just want to pass that on. The next Mayor and Alderman Meeting will be August 25th, 5:00 PM, right here. And that's all I have for right now, is Mayor Communications, calendar events. I don't think there's anything planned in August other than the August 25th Mayor and Alderman Meeting. So Police Department with your report, please.
Yeah, Francis, any questions?
All right. It's gonna be short and sweet. I'll just go down the line here. We have, we had three domestic calls from July 15, June 15 to July 15. We had one drug arrest. We had one trespass arrest. Notice our, our drug arrests, it went down dramatically. That's obviously what we want to see. So, and that's due to more presence. We've had one theft, which that's went down dramatically, and that was theft out of a vehicle. Someone left a personal vehicle. So I just employ everyone, make sure you take your personal items out of your vehicle, purses, guns, wallets, and things of that nature. We did 54 traffic stops last month. 23 of them got citations, 31 got warnings. 90% of the citations that were, well, maybe 80% of the citations that were given out were to truckers, illegally parked. The rest were driving while on their phones. So just, we're trying to cut that down a little bit. Our calls for service was 351. It was about the same as last month. Last month, we had 352. And of course, our crashes, minor crashes, those went up by two. So we had eight the previous month. We had 10 this month. All 10 of those, I do, I could be mistaken, but I think all 10 of those were actually on the pilot's property. They were all minor fender benders on their property. So that's, we didn't have any in town, which is good.
Good.
All right. Just a few other things to recap on. So I know Facebook is a big, big thing and people get their news from Facebook. I say it's like CNN. Don't believe what you see unless you hear it, right? Personally, we did not absolutely have any deceased individual yesterday on Tresser Road. You know, there were so many rumors out there, but it was a person that was intoxicated, highly intoxicated. He went to the hospital. So we got him treatment. Because there was a large amount of police presence, people got a little nervous. The reason for that is, is the call came in as a man on the side of the road, body on the side of the road. Obviously, you know, we go there and then of course Marion County gets dispatched. So there were several vehicles there, but nobody died. There's a reason there wasn't a press release. So, okay. The other thing, scams. They're still, they're never gonna go away. People are gonna get scammed. We had one. She was an elderly lady. She received something in mail, actually was, says it was from Mont Eagle Police Department, from a captain, so-and-so. We actually had, the City Hall posted that on their page. This is a scam, but she almost paid $5,000 to someone who said they were gonna arrest her if she didn't pay this money. So I will say again, you will, law enforcement will never, ever, ever, the IRS will never, ever, ever say, "If you don't pay this, you're gonna get arrested." Right? The IRS will send someone to your door, maybe do an inventory of your home for your personal property and stuff like that, but law enforcement will not, under no circumstance, come arrest you for something like that. A deputy's just gonna show up to your door and say, "You have a warrant." It's not. "You have a warrant for pay this." Okay? The last thing I'm gonna go over is, school starts back August 7th. As last year, you're gonna see a lot more presence with law enforcement. Obviously slowing speeders down, distracted driving, but we're really gonna be focusing on child restraints. So we're gonna be pulling vehicles over that are coming out of the parking lot if the kids aren't restrained properly. And if they're not restrained properly, we're gonna pull them over and we're gonna show them how to restrain them properly. You know, it's not gonna be one of those, you're gonna get fined or anything like that. Now, obviously, if I pulled Ms. Jane over four times, Ms. Jane is gonna get a citation on the fifth time. But it's more, the reason we're doing this is for child safety. And also, hey, Carteron, Sergeant Carteron? Oh, okay. So the last thing I'm gonna go over, these are, this is our new uniform. This is what our new uniform looks like, okay? Properly identified, Mont Eagle Police Department. It's all blue. So now I might wear slacks sometimes, but my shirt's gonna say Mont Eagle Police Department so that you are, we are properly identified. If someone comes up to you and says, "Hey, I'm from Mont Eagle Police Department," we're not looking like this. Call 911 and get one of us, you know, in contact with you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Alderman, any questions of the chief? Do you have a full staff choose?
No. So I'm losing one and I'm losing another one as of today. So, there you go. No, he's retired the dog. He's gonna, he's gonna be an SRO. You know, he's put a lot of years in on the road, so he went ahead and retired Milo. I don't have the exact date yet, but he will no longer be with us, probably next week or so.
Are we gonna, are we planning on getting a replacement K-9 unit?
So, you know, that's really gonna be up to the board. Do I see the need for one? Absolutely. But it is costly. So one of the benefits that we had with Sergeant Boss was with his military background, he was able to purchase the dog himself, train the dog himself, and have the dog in his home. In order for us to have a K-9, you're probably looking at, to buy Milo, it was, I think, $16,000 to buy him, and then to have him trained was another $12,000. And then we have to build a kennel, you know, outside. So you're, you're probably looking at about $30-ish or $40,000 to have a K-9. However, if you can get a K-9 like Milo, who is a, basically a three-tier K-9. He was a tracking dog. He was an article search dog and he was a narcotics dog. Narcotics, I'm okay with. It's great to have that dog. But more importantly, what was, what I wanted most out of it was the article search. So if I got someone that bailed out of a car and threw a gun, and we couldn't find it, we could call the dog, "Hey, let's find this gun." So, you know, a citizen or a kid doesn't grab this gun. And the other one was if we had a missing elder or a child, you know, that's where these, these dogs come in handy. So that would be something we can, we can look at, but it's one of those things that it really has to be budgeted for. And then of course, you got the care for the animal as well, because now that animal belongs to the city. So, you know, you're taking on that as well. Do I see the need for it? Yes. Do we have the budget for it? I have no clue.
So this would be, because he had the dog with, I mean, since it was his dog and his home and everything like that, the expense would be increased if we brought in something unless we found another officer, K-9 officer, that would do the same thing and have a dog and live in their home?
Absolutely.
It was kind of opportunistic.
It was. And it was to prove a point too, because you know, Mont Eagle's such a beautiful town. We get lots of visitors and, you know, most, every, actually probably everyone in here has probably never encountered anyone who does drugs or has come and encountered that. However, it was flowing through Mont Eagle pretty, you know, pretty heavily there for a little bit. It's not now. So the K-9 does make a big difference. People are like, "Oh, he's got a K-9. Let's go around Mont Eagle."
When, when do you think it'll be brought before the council to, you know, approve or not approve the other unit?
So first of all, I need to obviously get another full-time officer and then I was gonna put together another, probably September. You know, I put a package together for you guys to, you know, think about it.
Thank you.
He is.
Any other questions from the Alderman?
I have a quick question. I know we started getting monthly departmental analysis reports to look at overtime among departments. And I know that with police especially, their overtime can become tool when you're under, both when you're understaffed and also when you, when you have some officers that need a little, a little extra to make ends meet at the end of the month. Can you explain just briefly to the board how you use overtime? Because I think, I think it's important for them to know.
Well, I think we'll be discussing overtime at a separate workshop with the accountant and analyze all of that. So if you don't mind, we can hold off on that at this time.
Just, just to follow up, I asked the exact same question last month when you were not here, Nate. And his answer was majority of the overtime, correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but the majority of their overtime is for court time for the, for his department.
And events like 4th of July and things of that nature.
If you answered it last month, it was.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions from the Alderman? Thank you, Chief. Fire Department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
On the fire department, we've had 30 calls for the month. That stays about normal for, for the month. Three of your Mont Eagle members have successfully completed their National Registry for their EMR, the program that they was in. So there's the emergency, or the EMRs, the National Registry levels where they have to go and take all their testings for the class. That's what gives them their license. So now that EMR certification, it's, it's actually a national level, but that will go into the state level. So once they get their state license, which they're done with it, once they pass the national level, it transfers to the state and then they start practicing. Everything's good. So we gained three guys from that. There's another three that has to take it, which now, I think last month I told you, we're around eight or nine EMTs now at the department. So we're looking forward to that. We're ready to roll with it. Members continuing to do their monthly fire training as required. They're back on track now with that for the fire side. So we'll start getting into pumps and stuff like that, getting our annual pump test done and stuff that we laid out on, when we was doing the EMR program, we're able to do that. I think Wednesday nights our next one, you guys are all welcome to stop by. Insurance recovery, so I wanna, I wanna touch on that a little bit. I actually got an email back from, I think last month, if you remember, I told you, we responded to a tractor trailer incident and we blew, what, six or eight tires off of our engine. We had about a $5,300 bill from the tire shop on replacing the tires on it. They ran over some engine parts in the road. Couldn't be helped. It is what it is. All that's been submitted. I actually got an email today from, from Fire Recovery, our third-party billing. Everything's good. They're, they've submitted that for reimbursement for us. So there's that. But I wanted to stress to you guys as the community members that when we do this and we, we use the fire recovery as a third-party billing, this is mostly for commercial freight fires that involves the interstate. Nothing will ever come to you guys as, as citizens or anything to be billed interior in Mont Eagle. Most of the time, we use this on the interstate because interstate is a costly effect for the fire department for fuel, responding and everything. This gives us a little leeway to recover some, some funds off of it, which I think's pretty awesome. It helps our budget. So that's kind of fire. Anybody got questions on fire?
Okay. You wanna do building?
Yeah, let's do building and I'll give it to AJ. Building reports. So there's been six building inspections that I've done. I've issued one certificate of occupancy. I actually have two more that I've been negligent on and the guy's probably gonna get ahold of me. So there had to be three total that I will issue for this month. Mountain Inn has failed the BZA board and now I'm back on track with, with pursuit of the cleanup and the procedures for remediation of that building. Removal efforts of the building, as has 30 days to be resolved. And right now, I'm in the process of waiting on a response from property owners looking for the AIA's and everything that's involved in the building, as well as adapting state records. There's some state reporting that also went into that. So I'm waiting for the state man to send me his reports on it. Yeah, that's all I'm gonna say about that. There's been three permits issued for building. Two commercial permits have been working with regional, has been submitted to the regional planner to set the Jonathan Rush. That's gonna go to the Planning Commission for, for two commercial projects. One's forthcoming for, I think, the commission. The other one's getting, it's for a CHIRPS, working with the projections on a CHIRPS that's scheduled. The convenience store, several of yous asked me what that was gonna be. I've told you everything from a pin-pony club to, it's a convenience store. That's what's going in over there. And everything is on track. Everything looks good. It's actually a contractor out of Chattanooga that's very, he's a pretty thorough guy. He's, he's awesome to work with. Everything looks good. They set their grease trap interceptor, their grease interceptor in on the last week, the middle last week. Everything's tied in and ready to hook to our, our city lines. Everything's looking good with it. Good file on that. Questions for building?
What's happened with the townhouses behind the school, the little school?
Yeah, so I think me and Mayor had actually talked about that last week a little bit. So they're still in compliance with their permit. It gives them 180 days, right, for the 105.5. December the 12th, right, Mayor, I think, was the last contact that I'd had with them. So we're a little out. We're within a six-month period. The last I'd done on the original, the standing, was a rough-in inspection. Opens up for the final inspection, so they had 180 days. But they've also put sidewalks in. They put some more storm drains in. They've done the site preps for the other two on them. I need to reach out to that fellow and see where we're at and just kinda see how his schedule's looking.
We're following that up within the time limits. Any questions for?
Yeah, a couple. Yeah, a couple. Were you referring to the, the development over, I missed the first part. Development behind High Point? Is that what you were talking about? Okay, yeah. Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna ask you about that. But also, has the Mountain Inn been notified that they failed the BZA?
That's not, I mean, not my place to notify them on the BZA. It is my place to let them know that I'm moving forward on the, on the building.
Okay. I just, I didn't know if there was some formal notification that we need to give them just to let them know. They didn't show up and they failed anyway, but they didn't show up. So I didn't know if they even knew.
I don't know how the city usually handles that. I don't know if we send them a notification or what.
I just don't want them to, when you show up and say, "Hey, you need to start doing something here," and they say, "Well, hang on a minute. We're, we've, we did this." I say for them to not, not get cranked.
They wasn't surprised. That's all.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Code enforcement?
Got three residential violations served for this month. One of them's involving overgrown grass and stuff like that. So, we're still dealing with that. Fourth Street Residence dealing with codes filed. That went through all the stuff that was going on private party with that. So, we moved on with a, another service to them. And trash, and the grease collectors at Old Dixie Leed Diner, all that's been cleaned up. And the grease traps have been removed, and the trash has been mitigated.
Thank you for that. That was a hot topic, as they say. So, appreciate you following up on that.
All that's cleaned up, and then just the yard signs throughout town, the advertising signs pulling them and notifying the people that.
Any questions of code enforcement? Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Can I add on the code side? So, there's been some things, you know, some of the public's, you know, I get phone calls periodically about this place or that place. And it kinda makes me, makes me wonder about a paper trail, right? So, if this goes to court and we have to do anything to intervene on something that's not, you know, most generally, the public's, it's just, folks are how you treat them, right? So, if you, I'm not very assertive unless I have to be. Neither is AJ. I mean, we kinda tag-team stuff. But most of the time, we, you know, folks are great to comply and try to work with us on things. And once they understand, and a lot of this jobs education to public, they don't understand what, you know, the ordinances are. So, it's all in how you treat people. But I also think, on the other side of that, we used to, we used to file a complaint from the public to the, to the city. And to me, that kinda opens up the door for a paper trail, that if there is something that comes up, and there's one particular in mind that is kinda under open, open investigation, I don't wanna go into detail on it and elaborate. But it kinda makes me think for your protection as the public, as well as the city's protection for liability, that if we had some form of a paper trail, like we used to do, to come to City Hall and file the complaint.
It still happens.
If you call me, that's great. But I'd also still recommend coming to City Hall, filing the complaint. Your name is never brought up. I will not mention your name. It's confidential. I'll handle it from the code aspect on it for the ordinance. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Parks and Rec, our lighting fixtures have come in. They're the new lighting, downlighting, LED lights for the walkway on the greenway. So, we've started to install those, and the contractor will be working on that over time. The other thing, I don't know if it's Parks and Rec's, but we've gotten approval, and we're lining up work to replace the interstate ramp lights. We'll see what's left. We think we've corrected the underground issues and the wiring issues. So, the next step is to put the bulbs in. So, we'll be doing that. Any questions on that? Utility manager, John, you have anything?
No, I'm just saying that question.
Any aldermen have any questions on utilities?
No.
Okay. Street Department, there's nothing other than what's coming up. We'll get to that soon.
Sorry, my brain is working slowly.
What happened now?
Are we gonna go over that task order that you sent about?
That's under new business.
Well, I guess, a related question. Have you taken a look at that, John? The task, the task order that Travis put together on rehabbing and getting the second outfall going?
Good talk, man.
Okay, he sent a task order in. So, if you haven't seen it, wouldn't you make sure he gets handled? Because I was gonna ask him about questions about it, if you hadn't seen it.
Yeah. Building inspector, we did, planning commission, their meeting will be the first Tuesday in August. Beautification and tree board?
I have a motion from beautification committee to present. The beautification committee moves that nothing will be added or changed in the Montego Greenway until the beautification committee sets policies and procedures for that space. If you have a question, I'd be glad to answer while we're doing this.
That's a motion from the committee. It doesn't need a second. Is there a discussion?
I think it's a good idea until we get what we consider to be a, kind of a master plan for that greenway, which we're in the process, Imagine Montego and beautification committee are, are in the process of looking into.
Agreed. The concept behind the motion, as I understand it, Martha, and correct me if I'm wrong, we don't wanna overcrowd the greenway. We want it to stay green. We want whatever trees are appropriate, if any. And it's just an overall view of how we wanna maintain it and what goes in there. So, I understand the motion completely. Any further discussion?
So, what would be the process? So, I know we missed one of the dying trees that would probably like to replace this winter. So, would that trigger a process where we would have to approve that tree replacement?
The committee, and maybe we should add that, but the Tree Advisory Council will make determinations on trees. Beautification is going to bow to them on trees.
So, it wouldn't need any full council approval? It would just?
No. That's maintenance.
Okay.
Any other comments from the alderman? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that motion. Any other report that you have?
We're working on a number of different things, but nothing.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Imagine Montego?
Yeah, not a, not a whole lot to report, different from last month. I'll just, I'll do a quick little recap of something in case anybody didn't remember it from last month. But we have asked the tourism and the beautification subcommittees to submit to the council by the end of August, or actually, mid-August, to the steering, Imagine Montego Steering Committee, their top three to five priorities, so that we can look at how they need to be funded, whether it's through grant, private funding, or something from the city. And in the case of a grant, whether there's a match that the city would need to, to approve. So, those should be coming in mid-August. And we hope to review, the steering committee hopes to review those, and then hopefully present something to the council on the August twenty-fifth meeting that may require some approval of funds or, or some sort of movement forward. So, that is, I believe that's about it for Imagine Montego, the last meeting.
Any questions from the alderman on Imagine Montego? Thank you, Grant. Alderman reports, do you wanna continue with whatever comments you have?
Me?
Yes.
Yes, just a couple of things. We had, I had asked about the, about the meters for sewage, a timeframe for, I think there were three meters that we talked about in the past. And you were gonna, I think as of last meeting, you were gonna talk to either Travis or something else and get some information about the timing of those potentially being put in. And I assume we'll have to deal with the cost of that as well. So, I just wanted to follow up and see if you had any further information.
No, other than that we're waiting for the appropriate time. Probably, I think, as Travis outlined, what weather times would be the best to evaluate the process. So, working on a timeline with him, it'll probably be more in the fall.
Okay. Secondly, the overtime report that we received this month, I've kinda done a comparison over the last three months, since we started getting this report. And we had originally, we had a workshop on this and had, had a little bit of discussion. And if I remember correctly, Mayor, you were gonna be looking into this. And overtime has not moved really one way or the other, up, a little bit up, actually, since, you know, from April to May to the June report now. And I believe that one of the reasons that we were kind of concerned about this is that there's some overtime that's coming in that is in excess of a full-time person. And so, I just was wondering if you had any follow-up in how you were managing overtime in terms of verifying and approving overtime for different departments?
Yes, as things come up, I approve the overtime. But I think, as you may recall, I've asked to have a workshop when the accountant returns to look at the entire payroll workshop budget. So, if you don't mind, we'll put that off till a September workshop.
Okay. I just, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure that we are even in the meantime, doing, maybe being a little stricter on verifying that, that overtime is warranted from a, some sort of, some sort of bad event, like a water main breaking or something like that. It's just, we've consistently, within the water department, we've had a hundred, a hundred and forty-four plus twenty-nine, actually, hours consistently over the last several months. And it just seems like we may need to pay a little more attention to what is considered an emergency situation for overtime versus, versus things that should or could be done during normal working hours. And then, obviously, the overall look is to see whether we need additional staff to, to get rid of some of the overtime costs that we're incurring.
Yeah. Part of that workshop will be where you get to interview those employees that we have concern about. Overtime is not only water main breaks. If the phone system calls out people for water problems, or sewer problems, or lift station problems, that's also a part of it. They're not always eight to four on weekdays. So, I think we should just hold off on all of that till we get to talk to the employees and the accountant and me. But right now, yes, I'm monitoring and approving overtime hours.
Okay. And department heads should be part of that.
Yes, absolutely. They will be.
Okay. I had asked, third thing, I'd asked last couple of months about the, whether we're getting, whether we're getting the appropriate money for short-term rentals from the short-term rental platform. And I understand Debbie and I've, we've talked a little bit about this, and I understand her frustration in trying to, trying to answer this question. I actually talked to the comptroller who sent me to another department, who then sent me to the financial control office, who I've left a couple messages for. So, I'm gonna take a different approach with them to try and get ahold of them. They would be the ones that could actually give us a line item breakdown of the check that we get from them each month, how that breaks down into short-term rentals, just to make sure that the city is getting the revenue that we deserve from short-term rentals. Because there's, there's no way to verify any of that right now. So, just, that's just an update on, on what I'm, who I'm talking, who I finally, I think I've found the right office. I just can't get anybody to answer my call. Imagine that, right? The, one other thing that's been lingering out, and I apologize, Mayor, I don't remember your answer when I asked this last month, but did we address the, and I'm sorry that John's already left. Did we address the issue?
Who needs?
All right. What was the question? Did we address the issue that Mr. Fantuzzi brought up about the, he, there was, he was concerned about somebody in the utility department giving him verbal approval that he was moving forward on. And then, when it came time for signature, the utility manager, who was supposed to sign, had no knowledge of any kind of agreements or understanding of anything. Have we kinda figured out that, that, have you had any discussions with the utility department about how that process should work and that the utility manager should be brought in earlier to the, to the fold if he's gonna be the signatory?
Well, I thought I had addressed that with the planning commission and Jonathan Rush, that nothing gets approved until our engineer approves the utilities, more so than the utility manager, which is another subject. But the Fantuzzi issue, we filed with TDEC. We just got a reply. I think we'll need to discuss that. I forwarded that packet on to you from our engineer. And there will be costs incurred, depending who pays for them is another issue. But we're talking about possibly a new line coming down Parker Street. So, that'll have to be addressed when the engineer is here, and we can all get together and decide that.
All right. And that's a little bit different. I appreciate that. But that's a little bit different than the process that seemed to have, that seemed to have broken down in the, in the Fantuzzi issue, which I think was about his property, not the one over by Laurel Lake, but the property over in, closer to Summerfield.
Right. Well, the field.
It was a matter of some people within the utility department not informing the utility manager of, of what kind of promises were made.
Yes.
Even though he's the signatory. So, it's just a internal process thing I think needs a, just could use a little bit of attention, if you don't mind looking into that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Finally, sorry, I'm taking up time. The, the mayor and I met with a potential grant writer the other day. This, I brought this up last month as well. It's part of the Imagine Montego discussions that are going on, as well as for the city. We felt like there was a need for a grant writer to be not only part of the city, but also part of Imagine Montego, to play traffic cop with looking for certain grants out there for different projects that we are proposing. Not only the city, but also the, the Imagine Montego group. We met with this person. She's the, she's an employee of Franklin County and does this for Franklin County. In her eighteen months of service over there, she's already found fourteen million dollars, I believe, is the number of, of grants for the city, which is pretty impressive. So, we had a meeting with her to see if she would have time to work with us on a, a contract basis. I'm gonna use the word contract a little bit loosely, because it may not require much or any money out of the city. She does have the time to do this, to perform this role for us and for Imagine Montego. She is very knowledgeable in all of this. Majority of the grants, not, maybe not a majority, many of the grants that the city and/or Imagine Montego would be going after have administrative fees built into them. So, she would take that as her pay, the administrative fee part of it. And she would file the grant, she would fill out the application, file the grant, and then administer it. And then, her fee would come out of the administrative fee that's already built into the grant, which is no money out of the city's pocket. There will be an occasion where there's a grant that she, we will have her go after that does not have an administrative fee in there. And in that case, she has laid out a fee schedule that I've given to all the, all the aldermen here. Just as, just so you know, under item five, alderman, option two is the one that we felt like was the, was the most logical fit for us, which, in the case of a grant that is, that doesn't have an administrative fee, a small grant of up to fifty thousand dollars, we would pay her twenty-five hundred dollars per grant. Medium grants of fifty thousand to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand would be forty-five hundred per grant that we'd pay her. Large grants of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or greater, we'd pay her sixty-five hundred per grant. Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but if, in most of those medium and large-size grants, there's gonna be an administrative fee in them as well. So, we wouldn't necessarily, I doubt we would ever get to the point of needing to pay her forty-five hundred dollars for a grant or sixty-five hundred for a grant. In the, in, in some cases, I believe that twenty-five hundred is a, is a reasonable fee for the value that a grant could bring to the city and toward Imagine Montego to help, help with some of our projects. So, two things I would, I would ask, and we can, we can add this in maybe next month or in September, when we get our final budget closed out from last year, that we set aside some money for this particular effort. And maybe we just call this money Imagine Montego money. But we can talk about the logistics of that later. But what I would like to do is make a motion for the council to accept initiating a contract with this person, going ahead and getting it started, so that she can, she can begin understanding our priorities. And she can also jump out and, and grab, there's a couple of grants that are, the application, applications are due before the end of this month. So, I'd like to get them rolling. And so, I would put a motion on for us to accept, or for us to agree to initiate a contract with this, with this person.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion?
Yeah, how does this differ from what Southeast Development will do? I mean, her, her grant management is twice their percentage. Is she offering the ability to go after grants that they're not willing to do?
So, this, that's a good question. We, we just, the mayor just received an email last week, I believe, from Southeastern Development, that had a listing of probably eight or nine grants that are coming up, that we might qualify for. In the, the problem, what we plan, what we plan to do is, is this Thursday, I think we're trying to schedule a meeting for some people of the Imagine Montego Steering Committee, as well as some of the council members, to sit down and go over those grants and decide which ones would be better suited to be applied for by Southeastern Development versus by this person that we're talking about here. There could be a benefit, she can, she can manage, she can find grants that are not necessarily Southeast Development Tennessee originated. And I believe it would be in our best interest also to have her chase a few of these grants at Southeastern also to have her chase a few of these grants at Southeastern, mention to us, and it would be no fee, because they would take the administrative fee, just like she would take the administrative fee, so it would be no, no money out of our pockets. I think what we would want to do, because I don't, I'm not sure that I trust, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm not sure that I trust Southeastern, Southeastern Tennessee Development has the capacity to apply for all the grants we want to go after, administer all those grants, and close out all those grants. I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about how far in the process they're going to go versus, hey, we'll help you do something, we'll help you do something, as opposed to what this individual is willing and able to do for us. So I think there's probably a, there's a combination of some we would let Southeastern do, some we would let her do, and to the, to the benefit of all. So I don't think that, I don't see it as a conflict as much as I see it as a, as a partnership, actually, we use some for some, some for others.
All right. And to be clear, the grants we've asked Southeast Tennessee Development to pursue, they have. I think this opens another avenue of grants for grants we haven't even thought about. Southeast Tennessee Development was very good in working with the engineer to do the INI Phase 1 project. They were very good to do some other grants that they got us for the fire department with the block grants. But now that we're opening, it seems more requirements, especially under the Imagine Mont Eagle flag, we may need this kind of help to do that. My only question, Grant, is, is your understanding, do we have the right to say, no, don't apply for that grant for whatever reason?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. So it's not carte blanche that we're giving her, it's?
Oh, no, no.
We would approve whatever grant she gets.
Exactly. She would come to us and, and, you know, probably through the Imagine Mont Eagle Steering Committee, but she would come to us and the council to say, is this something you want to go after? And we would have, we would give her the head and nods up.
Because as you know, there's matching requirements for some grants.
Correct.
I just want to make sure we get that information.
Yes. She does not, she cannot just go apply without our, our knowledge or approval.
Okay. Any other questions on this motion?
So just to make sure I understand, so anytime there's a matching grant, the council would have to approve any sort of match, so we would be involved in that?
Absolutely. Yes.
If the authorization for her to, so say there's a small grant up to $50,000, we'd be paying her $2,500 to apply for that grant?
If we wanted that grant. That was my question.
And so the approval would come from, is you imagine it, the Steering Committee of Imagine Mont Eagle, or the city council? Where would that?
Well, I think it's because there's money involved, they would, under our current structure, it would have to come from the council, and we would bring it to the council. What I'm hoping is in a month or two, when we redo the budget, that we can give some authority to Imagine Mont Eagle for a small amount of money to go ahead and get approval to run after a particular grant for $2,500. And just so you, just so you know, in talking with her, it's not always going to be $2,500. Sometimes it would be less than that, depending on the grant. It's not, that's not a, even though it's said here, it's not a, she's willing to work with us. If it's a $15,000 grant, she's not going to take $2,500 from us.
So we would know that upfront?
Yes, we would know that upfront.
That's my point. We would.
And we would not be paying her unless we won the grant.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Grant. Anything else for Alderman?
Well, hang on a minute, just to follow up on that then, I would, I would ask, Mayor, that we, if you want to, you and I can reach out to her, I can reach out to her to have her send up her official contract.
Yeah, that was mentioned.
And I would like permission to send her the email with the other grants, so she can look them over and, and be prepared to talk about them after we have our Thursday meeting.
After the Thursday meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
And is the Thursday meeting something we would want her to attend?
Well, that's it. On page two of her proposal, she was going to submit with a phone call or authorization from you, which is fine, a scope of work agreement. So if you could get that in motion, that'd be something to look at.
I will. Which, do we think she should be at the meeting on Thursday?
I don't know. I don't think so. I mean, you, you can certainly answer their questions, and I think it's more philosophical approach to what we want to do with grants for Imagine Mont Eagle and the town.
Okay. So I do have permission to go ahead and call her and initiate, get her to initiate the contract?
I would say based on the motion, yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Dan, anything?
Yes, in reference to another thing about the overtime, I was, I questioned the police officer, our chief about full staff, and Grant has issues concerning the overtime, and I know short staff is going to cause that to happen too. So I am asking that, you know, we look at that in the September, August and September of replenishing his staff as, as he sees fit. I don't know how that's going to work out, but anyway, I did have that concern. And as far as the, we got an email today on Fantuzzi, an answer from Travis on Parker Street.
Yes, that was sent out to you.
That's a whole different deal, we don't have to discuss that tonight, but the, the issue is being looked at, and I think it was just a foible that, that happened internally about, you know, and I don't think contractors really need to go talk to our staff about things, it needs to come through, through our planners and so forth, when there's buildings to be looked at, and subdivisions to be built, and those types of things. And, and you know, and John's a straight shooter, he's going to, he's going to tell you what he knows. And it may not be something somebody like that agrees with. He's developed stuff all over Michigan and everywhere, and he comes here and he asks a, he asks our utility guy a question. John's going to answer his questions, and I say that in John's defense. It's not a Crossways problem that we've got of who to talk to and what answers they get. They need to ask the right people, and they need to go through the wrong proper channels. And I think that, I don't, we don't want to make too much of what that involved, and I think Mr. Fantuzzi did make a lot out of it. And I'm sorry that he did, because it was, there was no sense in it.
Okay.
And just, sorry, just a real quick follow-up on that, and I am certainly not blaming John. I'm actually saying that John is the, John is a little bit the victim here, because he was not informed, yet he was the one that had to sign. So you bring up a good point.
And following that instruction, he didn't sign until the engineer had reviewed everything, and we told, we met with Fantuzzi and said, it doesn't matter who says what to who, we had to file with TDEC, which we did, and you have TDEC's answer, and that's why I thought we discussed it in a workshop with input, so.
Very good. Thank you.
That's that. Nate, anything?
Well, I just wanted to bring up the projector. I guess those of you who come to all these meetings know that we haven't, haven't been able to do that in a while. It was made obsolete by Microsoft. It still works, but it doesn't talk to any of our computers anymore. So I did some research, and I found a new one, and, and we think it's going to, it would certainly be better than this one, but the Mayor brought up a question about whether it was useful to have that type of stuff up there. And so I wanted to ask the council, is this something that we want to, we want to continue doing? I thought it helped transparency, that's why I hung it up there. I, I like it when people can see the actual things we're voting on, but if it's not useful to, to the community, then, you know, we don't have to do it.
My only concern in discussing with Nate was, some people said, well, I can't see it, and it's sideways, and turning my neck, every item that came up, and so I've heard both sides of the argument, so really Alderman, it's an expenditure that you do or do not want to spend.
We could do it right here.
I think that's the better, having sat out there for years, it's, it's hard to see over there for sure, plus it's right in the face of whoever's trying to speak. I think it is a good idea if we could, if we could put it up here, everybody can see, we don't need to be looking at it, we've got all the materials in front of us.
But we had an issue lining it up above our heads.
I think we, surely we can get around that.
I don't know. Because we didn't before when Nate tried to line it up. We had looked at this back wall, as I recall.
The new one will actually be laser if we get it, so it's going to have a lot more flexibility, so we could actually move it up front and downcast it, probably have a lot more, I mean, this, this one's almost 20 years old, so we were kind of limited in what we could do with it. It'll still play VHS tapes. Eight fifty-nine, I think, is what it costs.
Eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars?
Yeah.
I think that's worth seven.
I agree. I like it. I like being able to see the stuff, because we don't see it before.
You really didn't see it on the side wall, did you?
No, because, I mean, I was looking, you know, you guys.
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can certainly, I can certainly throw it back here.
But I believe, so I would go back and watch that video.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't able to on this machine, so you think you can do it with the new?
Yeah, I think the new machine's got a lot more flexibility. You can, it actually has a 1.6 times zoom, so we can make.
Well, that's very important. I think a 1.6, it's a lot better than a 1.2. Fine. All I want to know is, do we have to get out of the way, or you can do it over our heads?
I think, I think we should be able to do it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Brighter and crisper, because it's a laser.
You don't need a motion? Okay.
Okay. Well, that was my only question, was is it useful? It sounds like it's useful, and so I'll try to, I'll try to rotate it and see about how to get it.
Okay. Then please proceed with that. Okay. Second reading under Old Business, second reading of ordinance 08-25, the engineering fees. I'll accept a motion to accept on second reading.
I'll make a motion to accept second reading of 08-25.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Everybody's second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Business permits? SAO shipping?
Yes.
Sam Owen?
Yes.
Come up, please, tell us what's going on. I see this is freight, where will you be located?
I live in Mon, I'm sorry, I live in Montego Green Apartments, but other than that, I've got a single box truck, or not even a box truck, it's a utility, a cargo van, so I get freight calls from brokers, and I'm not even here. I just live here, so I didn't know if I had to have all permission or whatever, you know. I want to keep everything legal.
And I appreciate that. When you get a call, it's nothing that you do with your residence.
No, sir.
And you have no business location here?
No, sir.
You just go get?
I just park my truck in the parking lot when I'm home.
And you get the goods, take them where they have to go, and return?
Eventually come back home. So like, I started this past week. I left out Monday, and I just got back home this afternoon.
Okay. Do you want to pass that down? Alderman, any comments or questions?
I've got it. I don't have any questions. I don't either. Is this, is this even needed?
I don't know.
No. What do you say?
Yeah, I think you, you need a business license through the county, but.
I've got an LLC through the state, but I say, do I got to go to Grundy County then?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think you're better off at Grundy County.
Okay, so would I just go down there?
Montego has no requirement for you at this time.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
I'll accept a motion to accept on first reading, ordinance 06-25, food trucks.
I'll make the motion on the first reading of ordinance 06-25, food trucks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that with the contingency that we use the one that Nate edited about 20 minutes ago.
Yeah, I was going to say that in the discussion.
Okay. Is there any, thank you for the second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So that, that first discussion, we are, we are discussing the version that I edited just before the meeting, because we found some typos, and, and we made one small change about, about alcohol that I'm happy to talk about, but just in general, this is an update.
Do we need anything?
We've not seen the first one.
Right, right. So I figured people would want to talk about it, but it's a logistical thing of, we changed four words in this version, so the version that's in your packet will not be the one we would be voting on, it'll be this version that we've all now seen on.
Mayor, is it, does it make sense to spend a couple minutes and explain just some of the major changes that we're talking about in this to the public, or is that something you don't want to do?
It's really up to you all as to how you want to handle this ordinance. Are you prepared at our first reading, or do you want to send it back for revision and discussion, and then send it, we'll put it on the website once it's?
I'm prepared for first reading, I just think it might be beneficial for them to, for the public to understand a little bit of what, what we're, what we're trying to do with purpose of, of this new ordinance. I think we can do that in two or three minutes.
Is there going to be a hearing? There will be a public hearing between first and second, I think that would be the time.
Well, if this is the first, that, don't, what, what do we need a public hearing for?
Public hearing between the first and second reading.
Between the first and second?
Yes.
Okay.
But we're probably talking about, in general, since we've got more food trucks here than we've had before, this is an update to our current food truck ordinance, and it tries to better define and make a difference between temporary food trucks that show up to like pres-mess and leave, and, and trucks that are here all the time. And the thing that prompted this was, if you have a bricks and mortar business in Montego, and you are selling things at retail, whether you're a restaurant or groceries, Montego derives that sales tax. And so one of the things that we wanted to fix was the fact that we have some food trucks that are here all the time, that are essentially permanently set up, and we wanted to make sure that we could get that sales tax coming here, which wasn't necessarily the case. The state law says that sales tax has to go at your place of business. So if you are a food truck that is based out of Tullahoma, then Tullahoma would otherwise get your sales tax revenue for sales that happen in Montego. So this, we, that was what prompted the conversation, and so this food, this ordinance will try to, is aimed at fixing that for those food trucks that are here all the time.
Okay. So if we can, let's get a copy of that to the City Recorder, Debbie, and if you would, let's put it on the website, and we can discuss it further at that time, and they'll have time to review it at a public hearing as well. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Would you make sure that that gets to Debbie and gets on the website?
I'm going to save it as 7:28.
Okay. You have in your packet approval of the purchase truck for the street department, it's a used vehicle, it's in the budget, it's below the budget amount. I'll accept a motion to purchase the street truck information that you have received.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the street truck.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion?
You said this is already budgeted?
It's in the budget, it's a used vehicle, and it's for the street department. You have it in your packet, I believe, right?
Yeah.
This was sent there?
What are they going to do with the K9 unit in the back? It's in the backseat.
The backseat of this one?
Yeah.
Nothing. It doesn't hurt anything, it's better that it's open, because it secures some instruments that should be protected, as opposed to the back of a pickup truck. So right now, there's no plans to change the configuration. Any other questions?
Where'd we get this? Where'd we find it?
Gov deal?
Surplus? Okay.
The good thing about it is that it already has the lights and stuff on, the truck lights and stuff, the cage and stuff, that's not a big deal, take off the windows, I mean, we just wanted to keep our instruments dry in the cab.
So it comes with this camper top, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't want the camper top.
Yeah, we don't necessarily, we put that on the gov deal and sell it back, we don't really need it.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Do we do roll call?
Roll call, vote, please. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We'll do that tomorrow morning. We have been able to negotiate that gov deal holds it for us until today's meeting. We explained to them that we were having it, they're holding it until tomorrow, so we're going to get it tomorrow, otherwise we lose probably a relationship and the vehicle, so thank you for that. By the power vested in me, and it was deemed an emergency by everyone, I authorized WASC Con, and you have a copy in your packet, to make those repairs. Those repairs are for three 10-inch Flomatic gate valves with the screens, with everything that's outlined in the proposal that they did. As you know, things happen. These valves happen to be underwater, so we, organizing, or WASC Con is organizing a dive team, as well as a boom, to pick these up. So it's going to be quite a process. It has to be done. If you don't do it, number one, there'll probably be a violation. Number two, the water quality will be bad. And number three, you'll be pulling a lot of unwanted materials from the bottom of the lake. So this, that's what deemed it an emergency according to our engineer, and he checking with T-Deck, so I went ahead and did it. I need a motion to ratify this action. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to ratify.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on it?
So.
Do we need a roll call?
This was, this is something, this is the, something deteriorated, equipment deterioration or something?
Yes.
That's now not working at all?
Correct. I think one or two of the three are not working to par. One of them was frozen. As they say, it's not operable at all. And unfortunately, due to the age of the sewer plant and the water plant, is going to be upcoming work to be done, just to replace old parts. And this is one of those replacements. So yes, it's just due to age. Some people think this is the original. I don't know.
And what's the, so we're not, we're not drawing any water right now? We can't draw any water right now?
Well, we're drawing some. One of the three, I believe, are operating, but it's something that we had to do sooner rather than later. We've increased buying water from Tracy City as a result.
Yeah.
To lessen the draw. So we're doing everything we can that was outlined by the engineer, and that's why I had to give WASC Con the go-ahead.
And did they, they give a timeline on this?
ASAP. As soon as they get things lined up, I'm following them up, and LJA is following them up.
Okay. I'm just trying to see what kind of risk we're at over the course of time with, with this replacement.
Well, we're fast-tracking this as quickly as possible. That's why deeming it an emergency, we didn't have to take time getting bids and going through a normal process. Because if ever there was an emergency, this was it, and I felt comfortable in calling it such. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you all. First reading of ordinance 11-25, the budget amendment to approve or authorize the LED lights that we're putting in on the greenway. It was budgeted, approved, the beautification committee looked at it, and we're proceeding with it, so this is that budget amendment. Is there a motion to accept on first reading, ordinance 11-25, that you have in your packet?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
And this is for the, we've already approved a budget request for the, for the purchase, right? So this is just for the installation?
Yeah, this is for the purchase and installation.
It's just the purchase.
So it's just the purchase?
So what's installation purpose?
So what do you point, I don't understand.
This is just for the purchase.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Which lights?
Oh, is it all the lights, or is it?
It's all the light, okay. I got clarified here. It's all the lights on the greenway for the purchase of the materials. The contractor can put them in for $10,000 or less, all 40 of them.
I thought you, again, maybe I'm confused. I thought you said earlier that the, that we've already received the lights, the downlights for the greenway?
Yes, we have. That's because it's coming, what, out of Street Aid? It's coming out of the Street Aid fund that was done. We bought three. The balance was approved, so we went ahead and bought the rest of them.
Right.
Because it was coming out of Street Aid fund.
So even though we've already bought them, we're, this is, this is for the purchase of them?
We still have to do the ordinance.
Still have to do a budget amendment, because she has to pay.
Okay. I'm, okay. My bad. I thought we had, I thought we had already approved the budget, or approved the purchase, and I thought we did the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we didn't.
You approved the purchase, but not the amendment.
Okay, got you. Thank you. Sorry, that was my fault. Thank you for clarification.
I was as confused as you. Don't worry about a thing. So is there a motion to accept on first reading, ordinance 11-25?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there one?
Yeah, I think I already.
So fine. Do you need a roll call? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That carries.
Just, just so you all know, so these are dark sky lights that we talked about in the Imagine Mont Eagle, so they have less light pollution. And the, apparently the state representative for the Dark Sky Initiative found out about this. I guess it was in the messenger, maybe. Anyway, he reached out to me last week by email. You, you too? Okay, great. But, so they were, they were excited that we were doing something like this.
Less light pollution.
And it came from their website, so I was able to reply back to him and say, hey, you know, would your website work well, because it found us a cost-effective light that suits everybody's needs.
And my favorite point, it lights the sidewalk and not the sky. Okay. Thank you for that. You've received a final item under New Business, the task order for the sewer plant work. This is step one of what may or may not be required. We think it's going to be required with additional requests to add on to certain sewer lines. Some lines we've already said, no, you cannot add on, because it's almost at capacity. And any add-on would probably put the pipe and the pump over capacity. So this is step one to analyze the future of the sewer plant and the capacity of the pipes. I'll accept a motion to accept a task order that's in your packet.
I'll make a motion. Will you accept a task order for the sewer plant?
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'm, go ahead, Nate.
Yeah, this is what I wanted to ask John about. Since $30,000, and $20,000 of that is field verification and coordination, and John was telling us the other day how all this stuff worked. So I guess I'm just wondering whether this is something that we need. Maybe it is, but that's what I was trying to ask John.
It is, and it's not that simple. I've looked at this sewer plant. You have a generator there now. You have some American pipes there now. You have an effluent permit for the creek there now, and we may need all of that as we expand the sewer plant. This is not to exceed price, number one. Number two, it's a lot cheaper than adding another module onto the existing sewer plant.
Well, that's for sure.
Yes.
So it's a task order. I mean, it's an order we've been mandated to do, so.